All right, for those of you that are interested, I am recording the entire Donald Trump Town Hall meeting hosted in the New Spirit Center, which is Darryl Scott's church. Now, I'm gonna do a separate video regarding my issues with it, but I'm gonna record this particular video so that you can watch it uninterrupted and not be moved by any of my comments. Here we go. And it will be without commercials, so it'll save you some time.
Democrats still feel entitled to their vote.
I will consider it a personal insult, an insult to my legacy if this community lets down its guard and fails to activate itself in this election.
Donald Trump thinks it's time for a change, a big change.
African-American communities have suffered under democratic control.
African-Americans are getting crushed by the Obama economy.
Nearly four in 10 African-American children live in poverty. Fifty-eight percent of African-American youth are not working.
Many democratic-controlled cities are being overrun by crime and violence.
Last month was the deadliest July in a decade for the residents of the Windy City.
They couldn't care less if it's an 80-year-old grandmother, a five-year-old child out there.
It has to stop. It really has to stop.
Stop, people! People are the peace!
And the left is stoking racial tensions.
Black lives matter!
Vote for Donald Trump. I will fix it.
And Donald Trump is the only candidate promising to bring about real change.
The Democrats have taken advantage of African-Americans. We will rebuild our inner cities and provide safety and peace to all of our citizens.
And welcome to Hannity, and tonight we're broadcasting from the Civic Center in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. Now, it's the home of Darryl Scott's church, the New Spirit Revival Center. Reverend Scott is the CEO for the National Diversity Coalition for Donald Trump, and he has graciously allowed us to use his facility for tonight's town hall. Now, he has invited members of his congregation to participate, and other Donald Trump supporters that live in the area that were invited to attend as well. Now, Donald Trump will join us in just a minute for the entire hour, but first, President Obama, he started out by promising hope and change and a better tomorrow. Here we are, eight years later, and here's where we are as a country. These numbers don't lie. We have the lowest labor participation rate since the 1970s. Almost 95 of our fellow—million of our fellow Americans are out of the labor force. America has now had the worst recovery since the 1940s. The country now has the lowest homeownership rate in 51 years. There are now almost 13 million Americans, more Americans on food stamps. We have over 43 million Americans living in poverty. That's 8 million more than when Obama became president. Median household income is now lower than it was in 2007. Today in America, 1 in 5 households do not have a single family member that works. 1 in 6 American men, age 18 to 34, they're either in jail or out of work. And President Obama will be leaving office having accumulated more debt than all 43 presidents before him combined. Now, all of President's failed policies have disproportionately also impacted the black community in America. Now, since Obama took office, there has been a 58% increase in the number of African-Americans on food stamps. We have seen a 20% jump in the number of African-Americans who are no longer in the labor force. Now, the African-American homeownership rate, that is also down. It's more than 20% lower than the national average. African-American unemployment is 8.1%. The national average is 4.9%. The wage cap between African-Americans and white workers is the worst in nearly 40 years. Median household income for African-Americans is $20,000 less than the national average. And the African-American poverty rate is 24.1%. That is over 10% higher than the national average. Now, there's also been a surge in inner-city crime. In Chicago, for example, President Obama's hometown, over 3,100 people have been shot this year alone. And since Obama has been in office, 3,660 people have been murdered. And according to the Chicago Tribune, historical stats now show that 75% of those victims are African-American. Then, on top of all of that, our educational system in America is especially bad in inner-city America. High school graduation rates are 9% lower for African-American students than the national average. And according to the most recent statistics, the high school dropout rate for African-American students is also higher than the national average. Now, the results should be much better, given that the U.S., get this, is now ranked fourth in the world in terms of money we spend per pupil. Now, per student, it works out to be $11,600 per student. And despite the high spending, America ranks 17th in reading, 19th in science, 26th in math. And by the way, we've not even talked about the disaster that is Obama and Hillary Clinton's foreign policy. Iran, Iraq, Afghanistan, Egypt, Libya, Syria, China, North Korea, Russia. Hillary Clinton wants to continue, she says, Obama's policies. Now, the country deserves better, and the African-American community deserves better. Tonight, Donald Trump joins us for the entire hour to talk about where we are and what he will help do to fix these problems if he's elected president. For most of this hour, I'll be turning things over to this audience, and let them ask the GOP nominee the questions that are on their mind. We've got a lot to get to, so help me in joining and welcoming the 2016 Republican presidential nominee, Donald Trump. Well, great to see you. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
You heard all of those statistics. You cite a lot of them in your speeches.
Right, I do.
Really bad.
Bad, very bad. For the African-American community, very bad. And honestly, for the community of this country, I mean, we're not doing well. You know that. Our good jobs have been taken away. They've gone to Mexico, they've gone to all over the place, but they haven't come back to us, so we're gonna make some very big changes.
But disproportionately, black Americans have suffered the most.
Totally, absolutely. It's not even close. That's why I say, you know, like, I can fix it. We're gonna fix it. And I always say, what do you have to lose? Some people like that, and some people don't. But it's like, and people are using that statement all over the place. Now, what do you have to lose? It's so bad. Some of the inner cities are so bad that it's, look, it's a disgrace, frankly, what's happened.
When you look at these numbers, a 20% jump in the number of African-Americans no longer in the workforce, 58% increase black Americans on food stamps, this is only since Obama has been president. Homeownership rate, I go through the entire list. You have made it a point in this campaign to go to specifically, to reach out to black Americans, go to black churches, and say, "Give me a chance." Historically, Republicans haven't done that. Why is this so brutal?
Well, I think maybe I'm a little different than a lot of the Republicans. I think some of the states we're leading, like I see, we're doing great in Maine, we're doing great in Connecticut, we're doing great in places that normally a Republican wouldn't do as well. And some of them, I mean, really, they wouldn't do well at all. They haven't won these states in years. Colorado's been amazing. It's been like incredible what's gone on. Wisconsin, we're doing great. So, we, you know, we're doing well in places that a lot of people wouldn't do very well.
What are the specific ideas in your economic plan? I know, for example, trade is a big part of it. I know you're gonna let multinational corporations bring back trillions of dollars from overseas. You've talked at length about energy independence. How does that help people that are here, people that are in cities like Detroit, cities that are deteriorating?
Well, it's about jobs. Look, our jobs have been stripped. You look at Detroit, where I went with, I tell you what, we had such an amazing time with Bishop Jackson, and here we have, I'll tell you, my pastor, right? What a pastor. Darryl Scott. He is, and he's become a big television star. But he's never gonna leave anybody over here, but he's become a big television star.
He co-hosts my show now every night.
Oh, really? Is that right? That's good. But he is fantastic. You have some incredible people, and by the way, they're not allowed really to speak their mind, you know, because if they do, they have the Johnson Amendment to contend with, "We're gonna terminate their jobs." These are the people that you want to have speaking to you and freely speaking to you. But we need jobs. We need jobs, desperately need jobs. Obviously, we need the schools, we need the education, we need all sorts of things, and especially the inner cities. The inner cities are, I mean, can you say never? But certainly, one of the worst stages ever in the history of the inner city. It's so unsafe, where you walk down the street and you get shot, or your child gets shot. So, we're gonna, we're gonna really fix the inner cities. We're gonna spend a lot of time. The Democrats have run them for 100 years, mostly uninterrupted. I mean, nobody else, just uninterrupted. And you see what's happened.
The high school graduation rate, 9% lower for African-Americans than the national average. High school dropout rate, African-Americans is higher than the national average. Inner-city schools seem to be suffering the most. You say, "Let local communities and states handle education."
Well, we're taking away Common Core. Common Core out of Washington is what you're gonna say, right? They're gonna knock it out, boom, boom. And, I mean, look at the people, look at the way, right? Look at the people, the way they, the mothers and the aunts and the uncles and the fathers, they wanna run their schools, and right now you can't. They're being run out of Washington by people that, look, I'm sure some are very good and very caring, but a lot of them are just bureaucrats that wanna pick up a check. We want the schools to be run locally.
Let me ask you about what has been going on in Charlotte. You saw what happened last night in North Carolina. The police did say that the individual was armed, they announced this morning. But you have these high-profile cases that all started with Obama saying the Cambridge police started, acted stupidly. Trayvon, that could have been me 35 years ago, he'd look like my son. He weighed in on Ferguson, and Michael Brown, and Freddie Gray, and all these high-profile race cases, but I just gave a statistic that I think should shock everybody's conscience and soul. I'm gonna church pastor. And that is 3,660 people are dead since Obama's been president in his hometown of Chicago. I bet, I bet nobody knows the names of any of those 3,660. Why is that?
Well, the violence in the inner cities is incredible. In particular, I watched Tulsa. And I know Tulsa. This is, the man just happened.
Right.
Hands up. He was doing everything he was supposed to do.
I saw it.
Everything. And a young policeman shot this man. I don't, I don't get it. You can come, I don't care where you're coming from, there was something really bad going.
Saw it, he had his hands up.
I don't know if she choked. He was walking, his hands were high, he was walking to the car, he put the hands on the car. Now, maybe she choked, something really bad happened. But this is something, you know, it's just not justified.
How do we stop this cycle of violence, and more particularly, I mentioned Chicago, 75% of those shootings are black Americans. 3,660 since Obama's president. This year alone, over 3,000 shot in one city. Now, I would think if it was your home city of New York, you would've gone to New York and tried to do something.
Well, I was in New York when it was really, numbers, never like that. I mean, Chicago is, you know, you take some of these cities, it's worse than, and there's two Chicas. There's the luxury Chicago, where I have this incredible hotel, and it's a different world. And then you have the other side of the world, where it's horrible. Now, I have to say, the crime is just beyond anything. It's worse than Afghanistan, you know. I said, worse than some of the war-torn cities, and you know, that's true. But in New York, we had, Rudy Giuliani did a fantastic job. He was a great mayor, he really was. We had horrible numbers, and we had a wonderful police commissioner working with Rudy, and they started stop and frisk. And they did a great job. And New York became from one of the more unsafe cities to one of the largest, maybe the largest safe city, I think, right? I think it was the largest safe city in the world.
About 2,500 murders, you went down to 500.
Yeah, so it went, it was unbelievable. And with stop and frisk. Now, they've stopped it in New York, let's see what happens. But Chicago, maybe more than ever, you're gonna need something, because what's going on there is absolutely out of control.
Let me, let me ask this question. Hillary Clinton has played the race card against you in this campaign. She's talked about, I guess, all of us, if you're supporting Donald Trump, you're a deplorable person, irredeemable. Pastor, I thought everybody was redeemable if you, if you say you're sorry for your sins, right? Okay. Well, and that racist, sexist, homophobic, xenophobic, Islamophobic—
She went through the whole list.
The whole list. And check everything off. Does that aggravate you? Does that annoy you?
Well, you have to know from where it comes. I mean, I understand what's going on, and, you know, it's their only hope. They see what's happening with the polls, you see what's happening with the polls. We have a movement going on, Sean, and this is white, black, Asian, everybody. We have a movement going, Hispanic. Because people are tired of what's going on in the country. You know, we spent trillions of dollars, $6 trillion now in the Middle East, and you come to Cleveland, or you go to Detroit or Philadelphia, and we can't build a school, we can't even paint the classrooms. We build schools in these places, and they knock 'em down, we build them again, they knock 'em down, we do it a third time. Look, it is insane. We spend six, we're up to $6 trillion in the Middle East, and our roads have potholes, our highways are in bad shape, our bridges are falling down. So, it's, people are tired.
When she uses all, all of those names, now, she has taken money from countries like the UAE, and Kuwait, and Oman, and Saudi Arabia. So, she says, "You're racist, sexist, homophobic, xenophobic, Islamophobic," but she takes money from a country that tells, where men tell women how to dress, women can't drive, women are told whether they can go to school or work. Gays and lesbians are killed for being gay and lesbian, and by the way, they persecute Christians and they persecute Jews. Is that hypocrisy?
Well, look, everybody understands what's going on there, and it's a whole pay-for-play deal, and a lot of people have been saying it, and for some reason, nobody is picking it up. They're just not picking it up, they don't wanna pick it up. They don't like seeing what's happening in the polls, they don't like where we're leading in Florida, we're leading in Ohio.
By the way, the electoral map, according to Reuters, it's 243 to 242. That's how close the race is. Coming up, we're just getting started. Donald Trump took us for the entire hour. Coming up next, we'll talk to the Reverend Darryl Scott, Reverend C.L. Bryant, and much more. Also, Don King is in the house, he'll join us straight ahead.
And we refuse to allow those who have selfish political ambitions, the selfish political ambitions of selfish politicians or selfish political parties to continue or endeavor to divide us in order to continue to subjugate us. And I believe that the person that God has raised up for such a crucial time in this nation, for this nation, is Mr. Donald Trump.
And welcome back to Hannity, and we are on the road at the Civic Center. We're in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. That, of course, Pastor Scott, Reverend Pastor Scott, talking about Donald Trump earlier today. He joins us along with radio talk show host Reverend C.L. Bryant. Don King is here with us as we continue. The 2016 Republican presidential candidate, Donald Trump. As I promised, I am turning it over to the audience. Sir, welcome. Thank you for visiting.
Thank you. How you doing, Mr. Trump?
How are you?
Good. My name's Ricardo Sims, and I had a question about, there's been a lot of violence in the black community. I wanted to know, what would you do to help stop that violence, you know, black-on-black crimes?
Right. Well, one of the things I'd do, Ricardo, is I would do stop and frisk. I think you have to. We did it in New York, it worked incredibly well, and you have to be proactive. And, you know, you really help people sort of change their mind automatically, you understand. You have to have, in my opinion, I see what's going on here, I see what's going on in Chicago, I think stop and frisk. In New York City, it was so incredible, the way it worked. Now, we had a very good mayor, but New York City was incredible, the way that worked. So, I think that would be one step you could do.
I'll just add one thing to Mr. Trump's comments. The murder rate was around 2,500, a very high percentage of African-Americans, and it went down below 500 because of the increased police activity in community. So, it was lives saved every year because of the concern and the resources. Pastor Scott, you see the violence, I gave the numbers about Chicago. How does this end?
Well, you have to change minds in order to change activities. So, if we can, Mr. Trump has talked about stimulating the economy and providing jobs. I talked to Mr. Trump in Trump Tower about this issue, and he told me he believes a major source of crime is unemployment and a lack of income. So, if he can solve that job problem, and we improve our living conditions, it would cause a change in mind, which would cause a change in action.
It starts with education. You have talked, explain, I think this education thing is not talked about enough.
Well, the inner cities are a disaster as far as schools are concerned, education. You know, we build schools all over the Middle East, and yet we don't build schools for our own children. The schools in the inner city, the jobs, and really what Darryl said is 100%, we don't have, you know, our jobs are being stolen from us, they're going to other countries. And the inner cities are absolutely being devastated in terms of jobs. You can, you can speak to some people, 50-year-old men, great people, great men. I don't know if they're as good as Don King anymore. And the job is moved to Mexico, their factories have moved, their manufacturers moved to Mexico, and we're not gonna let that happen anymore, and we can stop it so easily.
Pastor Bryant, I was a paper boy at 8, washed dishes by hand at 12, a cook at 13, a busboy at 14, a waiter at 15, a bartender at 17, and then I worked the next seven years in construction, building houses, laying tile, painting and hanging paper. 55% of black teenagers cannot get a summer job. If I didn't have those jobs, I would've been hanging out with all my dopey friends and getting in a lot of trouble.
Right. And you know, Sean, in order to tap into the free market and understand capitalism, and of course, make the best of what America has to offer, you need an example. And for too many inner-city young people, there's no example of how to make money. That's one of the reasons why I think that Mr. Trump will be a perfect president for this present time to African-American youth, because he can show the way—
What do you think as a pastor, and I'll ask both of you pastors, and I'll ask Don King, when they play the race card and they run Klan ads against Donald Trump, I can't think of anything more despicable. If I remember, Pastor, my theology class was right, "Thou shalt not bear false witness" was one of the Big Ten. What do you think when you see that?
I think that because they can't attack him on policy, they try to make it personal. They appeal to the emotions and the sensitivities of not only the black community, but the foreigners and females. So, they'll say, "Don't vote for Donald Trump." Females, and they'll arouse those emotions. He's a misogynist, he doesn't, he suppresses and dominates women. "Don't vote for him, blacks or Hispanics, because he's a racist." And "Don't vote for him, foreigners, because he's a xenophobe." So, they attack him and try to make personal, but they don't attack him politically, because that's all they have.
But the, well, that's a good point. And I will say this, because this is important. Those two, Don King, you have more diamonds on you than anybody I've ever seen. I think we gotta, we gotta show that cross there to the pastor. That's the biggest one I've ever seen. But, Don King, you are an example of an entrepreneur, hardworking, that made money in America, not the statistics that I'm reading. What advice can you give, and what are you asking Donald Trump to do for the black community?
Well, what I'm asking Donald Trump to do is what Donald Trump volunteered to do, is to change the system. It doesn't matter about whatever we see, right, wrong, and different. If the system don't change, it's gonna be the same. So, they say, "Well, why would make Donald Trump different from Obama or any other president?" Because he will call them out, the same as he did with Lindsey Tucker, what's his name, Lindsey?
Graham.
Lindsey Graham. If you say something to him, he's a fighter. He's gonna, he's gonna fight back. So, what the difference is, he would tell on the people who are obstaculists, that are blocking the change for the progressive of human beings. First of all, for blacks, we have to first be included. We could do all this talk about what you're gonna do about jobs, what you're gonna do about this. If you ain't included in the system, do not include us, you know? And white women, they don't include you. You know what I mean? So, he got the first, and he's the first one to came up with that. He wants to first create a whole new system, take this system apart, and then create, then put people together to work together, and he's gonna party and then to be able to make it happen, working collectively together. Working together works.
Mr. Trump, this is the Diversity Coalition, and we have a diverse audience here tonight. What does it mean to you to see people of all races and all religions and all backgrounds go on a bat for you in this election the way they are?
Well, it means a lot, and Don King is an example. First of all, he's a great entrepreneur, you know, he's the greatest boxing promoter ever, but that's the ultimate entrepreneur. Don King has been my friend for 25 years. He knows me better than most people know me. And when he called me, and this wasn't just recently, a long time ago, he endorsed me for president, and I shouldn't tell him this, I think he endorsed Bernie Sanders for vice president. So, we can't say that.
But number one, number two, you know—
He was very happy with Mike Pence, I have to be. Where's Mike? He's here.
Mike's here.
Well, Mike's his advent, because Bernie couldn't stand up, he couldn't give up that party loyalty. But he was the number one and number two vote-getters—
You were doing great up till now. You really were.
It was the people that would be the ones, because you know, I look at, like, when we first started in this country, the two highest votes would be, the highest would be president, and the second would be vice president, that would be four parties. You know what I mean? The two, the two vote-getters would get that.
I think America wants success and results.
They want results, and that's what he spells, and he's the, he's the epitome of it. He's the spirit of America. John Paul Jones, you know, when the captain said, "Shoot your surrender, do your surrender." He said, "I have not yet began the plan." Come and get the British ship, you know what I mean, and went on and navigated himself to the promised land.
When we come back, we'll have more questions from our audience right here in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. Plus, Amorosa, Harry Elder, Mike—
One day I said, "What do you have to lose? I mean, what do you have to lose? I'm gonna fix it. What do you have to lose?"
Hey, welcome back to Hannity, and joining us now, from the Tea Party, Forward Chairman is Niger Innis, nationally syndicated, set-on-radio talk show host Larry Elder, and Senior Advisor for the African-American outreach for the campaign. She goes by one name, Amorosa, all right? Good to see you. And you were great last night, both of you, thank you. We're gonna go back to the audience, as I've been promising. Sir, how are you? Well, thank you for joining us.
My name is Staff Sergeant Corvus Jacy. I'm medically retired, I'm a disabled veteran. With the opiate problem, with the opiate problem that we're having in this country, I watch my friends get addicted, I watch my superiors get pill-chased and all that. But my question is, what is your opinion on the criminal justice system pertaining to the drug sentencing for addicts and for those who sell them?
Well, it really starts, it's a huge problem. The drug problem in this country is incredible. It's coming from the southern border, much of it, a real big percentage of it. You know, you take a place like Ohio, and you go to New Hampshire, you go to Pennsylvania, you go to so many of the different places, North Carolina, South Carolina, it's just pouring into our country, all over. I mean, all over. Some states worse than that. I mean, New Hampshire has got a problem. It's their number one thing, they don't talk about, that's what they wanna solve, is the heroin problem, the problem with drugs. We have to strengthen our borders, we're gonna build a wall, believe me, the wall's going up. We have to, the drugs, Tom, the drugs are coming, and they are poisoning our country, not only our youth. You know, we always say youth. Well, the youth is being poisoned, but the whole country, I mean—
It's horrible.
Men, women, 50 years old, 70 years old, I've never seen anything like it. The drugs are pouring across the border, it's like water, and we're gonna solve that problem. We have to also help the people that are addicted. We have so many people already addicted, we have to help them.
You know, I—
It's a great question.
I was down at the border 12 times, all the way from the Rio Grande to San Diego. I was in helicopter, boats, altering vehicles, horseback, believe it or not, and I went into a drug warehouse, bigger than this room times 10, floor-to-ceiling drugs. Big problem in every community in America now, especially this heroin epidemic. Niger, I know you've talked about it. How do we, if we build the wall, isn't that gonna prevent a lot of those drugs from coming in?
It's not only outbuilding the wall, which needs to be done, but it's a question of leadership. You and I, Mr. Trump, were in New York in the early 90s, and when Rudy Giuliani came in, he created a revolution in New York that reduced crime, homelessness, and the crisis.
He was attacked, remember, he was attacked for being a racist, because he went into the communities where the crimes were taking place, and lo and behold, people's lives were saved.
Absolutely, and I have no doubt that Mr. Trump is gonna do for the United States of America what Rudy did for New York.
Larry, you're the sage from South Central, you and me, Niger, we've been friends a long time. Both of you, as friends, have taken a lot of heat for being black Americans and conservative. Historically, the black vote goes to the Democratic Party. Why?
The Democratic Party has convinced black people that they're victims, that they're perpetual victims. And those guys over there, Tea Party Republicans, black Republicans, Republicans in general are the villains. And we wear the white hat, they wear the black hat. That's what they've done. The number one problem facing the black community is the absence of fathers in the home. I've been doing radio for about 25 years. And 25 years, I've asked Reverend Jesse Jackson to come on my show about 50 times. He won't do it. Sharpton about 50 times, he won't do it. I've asked Farrakhan several times. The one black leader who did come on my show was Kwesi Infume when he was head of the NAACP. My first question was, "Mr. Infume, as between the presence of white racism or the absence of black fathers, which poses the bigger threat to the black community?" Without missing a beat, he said, "The absence of black fathers."
Amorosa, you have emerged as one of Mr. Trump's most ardent supporters. Didn't he fire you?
Yes.
Apparently. Once or twice.
Three times. But I'm the only one that did three seasons of The Apprentice. And I need to know that he also produced a show for me on TV1, an African-American-owned network. And not a lot of people know that. So he actually invested in me as a talent and in my vision.
And she did a great job. You don't ever tell the story. Look, I've known you for decades now. And I've been at Trump Towers many, many times. There is nothing but diversity working for you.
Absolutely.
I see it myself. I witnessed it myself. And then I watched these attacks against you. If it was me, I think I'd be pretty ticked off.
Well, you know, the one thing I see is that when you start to win, and I've watched this, not just for me, I've watched it over the years. When you start to win and win and win, they have nothing to say and they can't stop you. They always start using the racist word. And it's a very interesting phenomenon. But the word racist comes out. And that means that you're winning and that's their last chance. And I don't think it's working.
Can I point out one? We have a huge diversity coalition called the National Diversity Coalition, founded by Michael Cohen, Darryl Scott, Bruce Lavelle is here. Can I have those members of the National Diversity Coalition to stand up to you, Molly? Will the members of the National Diversity Coalition please stand up? All races, all background, all religion. And they've been with us from the beginning, Sean, from the beginning. And one of the first meetings that we set up in Trump Tower was with 100 African-American ministers. This was last year. No one notes that, no one takes notice that. The first thing that we did was to get him in front of faith leaders so that he could have a real dialogue and share his vision for this country.
Isn't it, don't you think, and you said this, I watched your Saturday morning speech in Detroit and I went on the air the next Monday and I said, "I thought that was the best speech you gave." And you talked about, what you said, first of all, I was glad to see you there, predominantly black church. And what you said is, "The backbone of this country was built in America's churches and specifically black churches."
That's true. That's true. And that's a fact. And I saw such love in that room. That was an amazing morning for me. That was Bishop Jackson. What an amazing guy he is and his family, his wife, who's really such an important part of the church. The church was, I mean, packed, just, you know, 1,000.
A typical day in the life of Trump, everything.
No, no, this church was packed. I guess, at least, I mean, well over 1,000 people. You were there. And it was really a beautiful thing. And the song and the love and the, you know, the feeling in that room was incredible. And I got up and made a speech. And you really feel it from the heart. That was an amazing group of people. And I'll tell you what, he's an amazing, he's Bishop Jackson. I did an interview with him and so many people saw that interview. So many people told me about that. But it was a really great morning.
We'll take a break. We'll come back. When we come back, Dr. Benjamin Carson, his wife Candy, they will join us, that and more. As we continue, Hannity on the road with Donald Trump from Cleveland Heights, Ohio.
I will always support your church and defend your right to worship, always. I will always be there. And here today to listen to your message. And I hope my presence here will help and very much help your voice to reach new audiences. It's going to happen in our country. And these are people, believe me, and many people out there that desperately need it. Christian faith is not the past, but the present and the future. It is the foundation of progress.
That was Donald Trump speaking to pastors earlier today right here in Cleveland Heights, Ohio. Joining us now, along with Donald Trump, is Dr. Benjamin Carson, his wife Candy. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to be back.
You were one of the first Republican candidates, one of the 17. He kind of beat up a lot of people in that primary to support him. And I just talked to you earlier tonight. You're like passionate. You want him to be president.
Yes. Well, he's a very good man. There's a lot of things that people don't know about him. But one of the things that I noticed when I was running, for instance, during the debate, when we had the moment when I couldn't hear my name, everybody else walked by, he stood there with me.
I remember that.
And then there was another time. You know, he was chastising the media because they wouldn't ask me any questions. The moderators wouldn't ask. They kept trying to skip over me. He was the only one who said anything. The rest of them were perfectly happy with it. So, you know, and I was the competition. So it tells you that he does have a lot more integrity than other people did. But also, you know, I wasn't particularly anxious to run for president, to be honest with you. But I did it because there was so many people clamoring for it. I had thousands, hundreds of thousands of petitions. And I said, "I can't turn my back on the American people." But I was secretly hoping that there was somebody who had the same kinds of values and principles who would withstand the terrible corruption that is throughout our system.
Let me ask you this. With your background as a brain surgeon, a real brain surgeon, since Obama's been president, remember he promised he'd keep you doctor, he'd keep you plan? On average, the average family will save $2,500 per family per year? Well, since Obama's been president, average families paying $4,100 more for health care. If Mr. Trump came to you and said, "Dr. Carson, I want you to help me repeal and replace Obamacare with free-market competition or health savings accounts," what would you say?
I would say, "I and a lot of people that I know and associate with will be very happy to help you there."
Good to see you and good to see you as well. And by the way, these guys hosted my radio show one day, together as a team. And everyone called in and said, "We want them, not you."